All right, roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas? Ms. Krasinski?
Here.
Mr. LaScavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Good.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present but two?
All right. Well, I have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzern County for MHDS. I do have one slip up here for Mr. Fitzgerald for the public hearing.
I apologize. I, uh, I thought, can I talk about number four?
Nope, not, not yet, in the next, uh... Yep, anybody else for the public comment for the, uh, public hearing on the budget amendment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, meeting's adjourned. We'll restart at 6:01, thank you.
Recording stopped.
At 6:01 PM, I'd like to call this voting session to order. We already had the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Recording in progress.
Mr. Haas? Ms. Krasinski?
Here.
Mr. LaScavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
You have 10 of 11.
All right, any deletions or additions to the voting session agenda?
Mr. Chair, I request that we remove number four from the agenda, and I could read my email that I had sent to everyone if you'd like.
All right, we'll have a motion, is there a second, and then we'll have, I guess we can have discussion on it. Is there a second to remove number four?
I'll second it.
Okay, just for, uh, posterity, number four is motion to adopt the resolution allocating American Rescue Plan Act funds to Dallas Area Fall Fair, trading as Luzern County Fair. And, uh, Ms. McDermott, you had something you'd like to say?
Yes, so this is an email I had sent out to all of council members, and I just said, I, my request that we hold off on voting on giving out the ARPA money until we have the below questions answered. According to the, that was emailed yesterday, so that was as of Monday, I believe, we have a bunch of internal projects that are possible. They are over $10.9 million. We have to get an answer from Booth, which I don't know if we did or did not.
Uh, we, I, Michelle Sparich and I spoke with Booth, uh, this afternoon briefly. Uh, we sent those, uh, requests, uh, from the departments, uh, for her to do an analysis of whether or not they would meet the requirement for the ARPA, what I will call the ARPA principal monies, which is approximately $1.4 million. We will be sending out questionnaires to the department heads, uh, to fill tho- those out, uh, so that they would be able to, Booth will be able to make a further analysis. She did give us recommendations on certain projects that she knows are questionable. I did not have an opportunity to reach out to the department heads, uh, that have questionable requirements, uh, but I will.
So we have to get an answer back on that. I would find it, you know, that we are informed before we make a decision. Um, so we have the 1.4, approximately 1.4 million left out of the American Rescue Plans. The interest earned, we're not sure how we can spend that, maybe that can be...
No, I, I'm gonna say it again, I think we've been repeating this over and over and over again about interest payments. You do not have to meet the ARPA requirements that we do for the 1.4 million that I'm calling ARPA principal that we still have remaining. So the interest, there are no, uh, attachments to the interest. We're also looking at the revenue loss and shifting where the revenue loss goes. As of today, we probably can shift $4 million, so we would have a total right now between the ARPA principal, the interest money, and the lost revenue of approximately $10 million. The ARPA interest, there's no requirements that are required as to the 1.4 million.
So what you're saying is the ARPA money is the ARPA money, but the, that has the requirements...
Correct.
But the interest earned from it is separate and free and clear of the ARPA requirements?
Correct.
Right.
So the internal project list that was just submitted to Booth to see if any of those would be eligible under, uh, ARPA money would, is over 10 million, like I said, 10.9 million, and that's not including the 911 or the EMS, which is set to be determined, so we have no idea how much that could cost. Also, um, we had mentioned that there are other projects, so Chair Lombardo had sent over a list of four today, so we just received four letters in May from different municipalities stating that they are requesting, or they're requesting more money to help them with their projects. Kingston Borough, Pittston Ambulance, Wilkes-Barre City, and Wilkes-Barre Air Police. Wilkes-Barre City's asking for a fire truck, and we have Kingston Borough asking for firearms, ammunition, radar speed machines. That money right there is about a million dollars. Now, we didn't even see those yet. How do we know that there's not other requests that are gonna be out there? Now, originally, council was the one, we were the ones who decided on how to spend the American Rescue Plan money. We had to come up with a way of how we're gonna give this money out. We knew that there was gonna be money left over, we didn't know how much. So now we know that there's approximately 1.4 million left over. How do we decide to spend that money? Are you ready to say, I'm gonna give out 500,000 to this one, but I'm not gonna help Wilkes-Barre City with a fire truck? That's $250,000 that they're asking. And you may say, well, we already gave money to Kingston and Pittston, and we did, we also gave to the Dallas Area Fair. They received $100,000 for water and sewer infrastructure. All of these entities already have received money. How do we decide who is going to get more money? Are we gonna open up an application process again, put a deadline? We have until December 2024 to allocate the money, and then we have until 2026 for all the projects to be completed. What I had said last, in the last meeting, is that we need to be able to get our internal county projects completed before we give it out, because this is a one life, lifetime chance of getting these projects done. And if we don't get them done, then we have to raise money somehow, and that's by raising taxes. So I think it's prudent that we get all the information before we make a decision on giving out any money, any money, to anyone right now. And again, those letters came in in May, our last meeting was May 28th. Two of these letters were before that, we did not receive them. Were we going to receive them? Who got them, by the way?
I received them. I received them, and I passed them on, uh, to the chair and the vice chair. I knew other ones were coming, and I wanted to send them as a group.
That's correct.
But, but, okay, so, so we knew, you knew that there were things out there, but that was not disclosed to us. So you want us to vote on something tonight when we didn't even know what other projects were out there? How is that fair? How can you make, how can you make an informed decision when you don't have all the information?
Uh, Mr. Thornton?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Lombardo. Yeah, we, uh, my view on this, and I, I, I know several other people in the administration and council members agree with this, that we do need to focus on our own Luzern County internal projects, and, um, in my opinion, now, this is just my opinion, it, it wouldn't be prudent at this time to open up a new round of applications to be received. I, I just don't think we have enough time to be received, to consider all of the outside entities in the county that are looking for additional money, or just for the first time looking for money from the ARPA grant. Uh, and I just don't think we have enough time for, to entertain all those outside projects at this time, and I'm, I am a proponent of, uh, what Manager Crocamo's doing, is seeking this information from the county heads, budget, uh, or department heads and directors and managers to see what kind of projects are out there. Now, Booth is analyzing those internal projects to see which are eligible and which are not. But this is my opinion, in, in the meantime, um, we have, I look at the Luzern County Fair as a quasi internal project, and the reason is, it, it's not a Wilkes-Barre City Fair, Hazelton City Fair, Pittston City Fair, it's the Luzern County Fair. And I've been to other county fairs, like York County Fair down there, which is tremendously a large fair. This Luzern County Fair is open to all Luzern County residents, um, it's just a wonderful venue, wonderful place to go every September, uh, when they hold it, and the damages that were suffered there, which are specifically enumerated in the packages here tonight, um, were due to, uh, act of God. It was a storm, a major storm that went through there after the ARPA money was allocated, and nobody could ever predict what was gonna happen, and it was a tremendous amount of devastation done out on the fairgrounds. Um, so I am a fan of holding back all of the private entities out there, all those requests, until we satisfy the other internal county, uh, projects that are gonna come forward soon, but in the meantime, I, I do consider Luzern County Fair as absolutely, uh, an important entity that this council support for the sake of all Luzern County residents.
So what you're trying to say is that that's more important than a fire truck for Wilkes-Barre City? Considering that the Luzern County Fair, oh, sorry, Dallas Area Fair...
No, I'm not saying that's more important.
Had a wine and beer festival out there June 1st, so if it was in such bad, dire shape, I'm not saying it doesn't need improvements, I'm not saying it's not a worthy cause, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, we need to take, which I had requested, just take two more weeks, let's get the answers that need to be, how do you decide that you're gonna give money out to one and not to another when they're requesting it? If, if Pittston City or Wilkes-Barre City...
Well, my answer is, because it's a Luzern County Fair, it's not the Wilkes-Barre City Fair or whatever.
All right, one council member at a time, please. Okay.
Thank you.
If it matters, Michelle Sparich is on, on the line.
Yes, uh, I, I'd like to have Ms. Sparich, she wants to make a comment really quick, then we'll have council members, any other comments you have, please. Go ahead, Ms. Sparich. Uh, okay. Okay, that's fine, uh, Ms. Stevenson.
Leigh Ann, I completely agree. I think there are multiple priorities that we have to check into first, and a lot of information that we still need to receive before making this decision. I don't think there's any issue with tabling it for another two weeks to find out the necessary information. You made very valid points tonight.
Mr. Wilovich?
I agree with Leigh Ann and Brittany, I mean, I believe it's up to all council to discern what a Luzern County project is, not just two members. I believe it's a decision that we, as an 11, have to make. I mean, you can't just put that on the plate, and if we got applications before that we didn't even know about, how is that fair to everybody else? The original ARPA application was fair, I mean, it's not an application process, but it still is an application process, because they're coming to us asking for money, and I don't think it's fair for certain people to pick and choose who comes to council. I think that it should be up to council as a whole, we should at least be informed that there's other applications and other interests out there, and not just being decided on... I, I, I think it's up to all the council, not just a few members.
Just for posterity, I just wanna let everybody know, like, myself and Brian didn't try to hide any information from anybody, it was just a matter of trying to get these projects grouped into one thing, and, and as they came in, is, you know, we were trying to put them together, and, again, for posterity, one of the organizations that applied for money is an organization that I'm a member of, and, you know, I, not that I'm able to support them, but, uh, they didn't even tell me, I actually didn't even, wasn't even aware of it until today when I was checking through my emails, just to make sure that I didn't miss any before we sent them out. So, I, I was not trying to hide anything from anybody, this was not any type of situation like that, um, you know, I think they're all great causes, I mean, it's all emergency services, which I, is something that I do for a living, so it's not that I...
And maybe, maybe we could give the money to all of the projects, the thing, and again, all I asked, all I asked for was putting it off two weeks until we get all the answers.
Putting it off two weeks until we get all the answers.
One, one thing that I, I would say, though, is that the organization... Mr. Haas, I think your, uh, your microphone's on.
Mr. Haas, I think your, uh, your microphone's on. Sorry about that.
That's okay. The organizations that I sent today, the four that requested, um, more funds, were four organizations that I believe already received funds, um, and, and they were for similar situations. Um, I think that the difference between those organizations and this one is that, you know, just as Councilman Thornton said, that there was an act of God, and this is something that, you know, is, is truly an emergent need.
They also receive money, and if a fire truck is an emergency for Wilkes-Barre City, then what is?
Okay. Mr. LaScavage?
I just hope your, your ideas here are, you know, truthful and don't have ulterior motives.
So all the information that I provided is not the truth? Do you know all the numbers of what we have left? Can you tell me right now, definitively, how much money we have left? And again, we may be able to get to all those projects, and I hope we can, but I'm not willing to make a decision on one when we don't know about the other ones, and, and how we want to spend it.
Okay, could I speak?
Council should decide how we want to make the decision to spend it.
Okay, let me speak, please. So I agree with Mr. Thornton that the remainder of the money, if able to be used, should be used for the rest of the county projects, period. We had an ARPA round, we'll never get through another round, I don't believe, and everybody knows that the first one had a lot of major glitches. Couldn't get on, wouldn't register your vote, it was a nightmare, actually, and I, I think I endured the most out of it. With that being said, here's a county project with the 4H, involves a lot of kids, does a lot of good for the county, promotes so much in the Back Mountain, and we're gonna thumb our nose at it. I just can't understand the reasoning, only because I think there's an axe to grind, I'm gonna call you out on it, that's what I think.
What's the problem with waiting two more weeks?
Mr. Wilovich, and then Ms. Smith, I apologize.
Now, I know for the West Hazelton Bridge Project, we did have you... Do you know if there's anything left in that fund, or how, like, approximate idea? Even if we split it with ARPA?
There is, but I don't know that have the exact number, I can get that, though.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I have two things. One, Attorney Skeen, in order to qualify for the ARPA money, is it true that the damage or loss of revenue has to have been related to COVID?
Michelle, are you on?
Ms. Sparich, are you on?
Yes, I apolog...
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I apologize, I'm not good with technology. Um, the 10, the 10 million in the revenue loss, if I, if I can address, uh, your question, that could be used for anything, the 10 million in lost revenue, we could claim that as a one-time exception, so that could be used on anything.
And obviously, the interest as well, right, Michelle?
Correct, the other items could be u, the interest can be used for anything as well.
Right.
When we had our call with Booth today, Rob and Booth, uh, told Ramilda and Mark and I that we have gone above and beyond putting these funds out to the coun, to, to the municipalities within our county. She said all of her other clients, like, we have gone above and beyond, um, and I don't, I agree with, with the council member, um, who said, we don't have time for another funding round, we don't, we're running out of time because the funds... But yes, to answer the other part of your question, somehow, these funds all have to tie back to COVID. So there is a, there are pages of categories, um, that Booth provided, and I can certainly forward that, but, but we do have to, it does have to, the project has to show some kind of loss.
Due to COVID.
Right.
So that means that this...
But this project was vetted, and it falls under natural disasters, if we're talking about the Dallas Area Fair in particular.
Well, I, I think it's obvious that we are, I'm just looking for the legal categories. So it seems that we might be able to use the lost revenue or the interest revenue for this project, but not necessarily ARPA principal, because it can't tie back to COVID, because this obviously happened after.
No, it falls within the category of natural disaster, if that's an acceptable category under ARPA.
Okay. Uh, the second thing that I wanted to say was that if we're going to consider this, I do think it's fair to consider all of the applicants equally, and take two weeks, as Councilwoman Stevenson said, to make sure that we have all the information and all the numbers that we have. The worst-case scenario would be to spend more than we have. We can't do that, we owe better to our citizens and our people here than being that irresponsible. I don't think two weeks is simply thumbing our nose at any project, I think it's doing our due diligence, which we were elected to do. Thank you.
Any other council members? Ms. McDermott?
If Michelle is still on, Michelle? With the revenue loss, is all of that money, because I know we can use it on county projects, but is all of that earmarked so far on, on projects that we already submitted?
I believe Ramilda, uh, mentioned before, we're in the process, because there was some funding awarded before we had Booth onboard, some projects were awarded money under the revenue loss category. However, we were working with Booth to take some of those projects that were awarded under revenue loss and reprogram them to another eligible activity. So there is some funding there, but I don't have a final dollar amount because we're not done doing that.
Thank you. So what I want everyone to think about is, there's a lot of numbers, we don't really have definitive answers. That's what we're trying to get, and I know we're gonna probably have maybe a couple projects that will fall through, and we may have that money, and that's something we'll have to deal with when that, when that time comes, but for right now, we don't know what we have, that's, that's the thing, we had revenue loss, we knew that we could use it on county projects. What were those county projects that were submitted? All of the new council members don't know, I really don't remember, but now we have a new list of new projects that we want, so...
I don't believe the revenue loss was used on internal projects. Michelle, that was before Booth got involved, I think...
I thought Brian had said that there was that formula...
There were, I'm, I'm, I can't say with 100% sure where those internal projects came from, but those internal projects were awarded either at the meeting before or after, I wanna say they were awarded either prior or immediately after the notice of funding opportunity, so it would have been either the middle of March or April. Um, so tho, those came from all diff, they could have been all different categories of funding, I don't have that list in front of me.
So again, what I request is that we just hold off a little bit longer. I hope that we have all the money, if we get all this money, then we can certainly give it out, but how do we decide that we're gonna give 500,000 to one, maybe 250,000 to the other? Again, a fire, truck, EMS is very important, as well as the county fair. I just had asked two more weeks.
Call question. There's a motion and a second, we'll do a roll call, please.
To table?
To table, yep.
Remove it from the agenda, I apologize. Chairman, can you restate the motion?
The motion was to remove number four from the agenda, Mr. Haas, there's a, there's a first and a second on it.
Repeat that one more time, I'm sorry.
There's, there's a mo, there's a motion on the floor to remove number, we're on the, we're on, um, passing the agenda, and the motion is to remove number four, the Dallas Area Fair, trading as the Luzern County Fair, from the agenda.
Very good, thank you.
That doesn't mean it can come back to the agenda, right? That doesn't mean it can come back to the agenda, right?
Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes, to remove.
Yes, to remove? Correct?
Mr. Haas, your vote was yes?
Yes, that's what I heard, to remove.
That's what I thought I heard.
That's what I thought I heard, too. I just wanted to confirm.
All right.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Yes, to remove.
Thank you. Mr. Lescavage?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Well, I'm a strong supporter of the fair. I will vote to remove it, yes.
Ms. Smith?
Well, I am also a strong supporter of the fair. I believe we need to do our due diligence, so I'll vote to remove it for today.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Wlachowicz?
Well, I'm a strong supporter of the fair, and I do want to find any possible way to fund it. I just think we need to look at all the options and look at all the projects, so I'm voting yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
We have three no, eight yes. It's removed.
Okay, number four is removed. Any other additions or deletions from the agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. We will now have public comment on voting session, agenda items only. I have a few slips out here. I have Mr. Pugh. We'll have you speak at the end of the meeting, if that's okay. All right. Mr. Fitzgerald? No, you can speak at the end if you'd like. Okay. All right. Mr. Mangan? Non-agenda, okay, thank you. Mr. Griffith?
Make sure we can hear you, Mr. Griffith.
We're good. Thank you. Number five I wanted to talk about. And, and number five deals with modifications to the American Rescue Fund awarded projects. One of the projects is the industrial, Wilkes-Barre City Industrial Authority for the parking garage, riverfront parking garage. And I know it doesn't specifically state it's tied to the Hotel Sterling project that was approved by council to get ARPA money as well for their funding. But I, I do believe the two are working together. One is important as the other. When they get the hotel project done, the riverfront parking garage will be tied into it. The concern I have is when that, when that project was brought to council for ARPA money, council was told that that money was available. They were going to, all they had to do is get the rest of the funding, and they would be able to move forward with the project. I think that needs to come off the agenda as well, until you guys get some, something from that developer that said he has funding in place. He promised his council he had funding. I remember Councilwoman McDermott grilling him about, "Where is the funding? Do you have the funding?" More, more than one time, over and over. We were told constantly by Mr. Baruk that the funding was available. All we needed was this additional $5 million. We took the $3 million from our UDAG fund, which I strongly opposed, too, because I thought we should use that $3 million for county roads and bridges, which we desperately need. We have a road at Huntsville Dam that's almost impassable, which is a county road. Yet we can't take $3 million of our county money or any ARPA money to fix roads so our residents could drive safely. But we're going to give somebody a project extension to 2025 without knowing if this person who's the developer, that hotel, has the funding yet. I think we need to bring Mr. Baruk back in here and ask him where the funding status is for that project before you give an extension for the parking garage. That's on number five. Thank you.
Any other members of the public for public comment in the audience?
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question? Regarding that comment, I, I'm not, I'm not clear on that.
A question to who, Mr. Griffith?
Well, it was suggested that we could have used that money to do roads. And I was told in the beginning, ARPA money could not be used for roads.
Not unless it's related to a sewer project.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, that's a different, that's a different pot of money. Okay. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? Anybody? Anybody on the Zoom? Nope. All right, moving on. Motion to approve the minutes of the May 28th, 2024 voting second.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Number one, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County for MHDS.
Some moved.
Second. Ms. Stevenson, Mr. Wlachowicz. Roll call.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wlachowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number two, motion to adopt the resolution approving a contract with Microsoft Corporation for productivity software acquisition and operating system licensing.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, roll call.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wlachowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number three, motion to introduce the ordinance amending the 2024 capital plan for the Luzerne County Sheriff. Manager Crocomo?
Oh, I forgot to turn my microphone on. So the Sheriff's Department were asking to amend their budget.
All right, thank you, Manager Crocomo. Number four, motion to adopt the resolution approving modifications to American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded projects. Motion. Motion in the second?
I just have a question on...
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
That's the, this motion addresses the large group of projects, right?
That's correct, and these are all...
And I understand it says time extensions?
Mm-hmm.
The only question I have, and this might be a question for Ms. Sparage. Some of the delays or the extensions of time extend well into 2025. And my only concern is if some of these projects go south in 2025 and they can't be completed by all the rules of ARPA by the end of '26, and we end up with hanging on to some of that ARPA money. And I know one rule was we had to allocate all of the ARPA money by the end of 2024. We had to earmark it, rather. So if 2025 comes and goes, and some of these projects never really got off the ground, and we really can't give them the money, I don't think we could use the money then. And my question is, could we use the money in 2025 or '26 for other projects? Or do we need to return that money back to the federal government?
What we could do is say, and I'm just throwing this off the top of my head, say we allocated a project and it was a stormwater project. If that project doesn't get completed, the county could, it is my understanding that the county could use that money for a stormwater project. Like, it doesn't have to necessarily be, I don't know, Crestwood Drive, but it would have to be in that same eligible funding category. That was my understanding that I got from Booth.
And that's in the regulations that have been published. It has to be in the same category. So even if project won't be finished in 2025, we can use that money for an internal project, for example, as long as it's the same type of project and it falls under the same umbrella.
Right, it has to be the same funding category.
Mr. Wlachowicz?
So pretty much, we're assigning it to categories, not individual projects, is basically my understanding.
That's a very good way of looking at it.
Uh, Ms. Smith, sorry, then Mr. Sabatino.
Quick, who am I? And if we don't finish the project by 2026? Or is that not an issue?
It will go away. All of, all of the funds have to be expended by 12/31 of '26.
Right, and if, even if we don't expend it in an internal project in the same, same... Thank you. That's what I'm looking for. I don't know why that was hard. In the same category, it still goes back to the federal government, correct?
If we're not done by '26, unless they change the rules.
Okay.
Mr. Sabatino?
I'd like to offer an amendment. The City of Wilkes-Barre Industrial Authority project, instead of an extension to March 31st of '25, to make it to, say, November 15th of 2024. So that gives us some time to reallocate it before it gets locked to a category.
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion in a second on that. Is that, I'm not sure. Manager Crocomo, is that, is that something that we think would be appropriate for this? I mean, I certainly, you know, the council's free to do it what they want, I suppose.
We can use that whatever date council feels like. We're extracting one, you're amending the resolution for that one particular project.
Got it, okay.
So I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
So it's a great idea to back it up four months or so. What would the entity, would the entity that requested this have anything to say about that? Would they say, "Well, that doesn't work for us. I don't know why council changed that. I don't, I don't know how to handle that."
Mr. Baruk is here.
Mr. Thornton, somebody should be on from the, if they were on here, they should be either online or in person.
Mr. Baruk is here, or, go ahead. Whoever wants to come up and speak on this.
Before he speaks, may I say something?
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
It seems to me if we're concerned about that, then we need to amend all of them that are beyond November 31st, 2025. Or 2024, rather. And there's quite a few of them. I mean, that logic does make sense, but if we're going to do it to one, we should be doing it to all of them.
I, just to speak on that, I think the problem with that is that, you know, I, I feel like there's, there's, I don't mean to say this in a negative way, but I feel like they're singling out this project because of the concerns that were addressed in it. Most of the other projects, if not all of them, and, and maybe they are aware as well, and they may address this when they come up and speak, but they're aware of what the deadlines are, and they have to make sure that they meet them by that, that criteria point. They're already coming to us for one extension. And those other projects that have come to us for extensions are, are doing the same thing. Like, we've told, I, I'm sure that we've told them in conversations, "Hey, this is your only extension. You're not getting another one." So, I don't know, Manager Crocomo or Ms. Sparage wants to speak on that a little bit more?
We seem to be assuming, and Walter Griffith seemed to be assuming in his, in his comments earlier, that they are inexorably interconnected. That's an assumption at this point. Secondly, the money that was given to the Sterling wasn't ARPA money. It came from the FEMA?
UDAG.
UDAG.
But we had already spent money on that. And it's still my opinion that because we spent that money that was attached to that, on that site, legally, that site is now assigned that money because there are other requirements. So I'm not quite sure how we are making the assumption that they are inexorably linked. I don't necessarily think that it's fair to treat them as the same when in reality the funding is not the same, and the funding has very different requirements.
Mr. Wlachowicz, then Ms. Stevenson.
Okay, this is a question from Mr. Newman, but the reason we're extending it is because I believe they're applying for more money, if I'm not mistaken.
That, I believe that might have been...
The Sterling or the...
For the IDA, for this one that we're talking about. They're, they're planning on asking for more money. They can't finish the project without the additional money.
Right, the parking garage is asking for more money.
Yeah, from, from a different source, not us.
Okay, all right, Ms. Stevenson, go ahead. You have, okay, I apologize. All right, go ahead, Mr. Newman or Mr. Baruk, whoever.
He'll start and I'll answer questions.
Okay. Go ahead.
So I'm Larry Newman. I chair the City of Wilkes-Barre Industrial Development Authority. And we had requested an extension of this ARPA grant because the total project budget of 3.7 million for this garage, which is a public garage that will serve not just the proposed hotel, but all of the development, including the River Common, which is owned by Luzerne, which is controlled by Luzerne County at this time, in that quadrant of downtown. All of that development requires additional off-street parking to support the development goals of that area. And so it will support the development of the proposed hotel project. It will also support the development of the residential units that are being created in that area. It will support the River Common as a recreational asset, and it will support entertainment assets such as the Irem Temple. So the project is in the process of applying for a, another funding source to complete that, that, that capital stack. And frankly, the time is needed in order to actually get through that process so that we can actually commence construction. That's just the fact that is there. I'm happy to answer questions about that, and obviously Mr. Baruk is here as well to answer questions.
Mr. Thornton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Newman, I just have one question. So the floor now is to move the extension timeframe from the end of March of next year?
To, to the end of March of next year, yes.
Right, March 31st of '25.
Yes.
Back to November 30th of '24. Will those four months hamper or hinder the progress or the success of these, these projects?
Yes.
It will?
Yes.
Could it possibly derail the project?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wlachowicz?
Real quick, what are the chances that you will be approved for the additional funding from the other source?
So we, it is impossible to say right now.
May I?
Any other questions? Ms. Smith?
Can you explain why? You're, you just said yes, that it would be thrown off the rails and could be completely derailed. Can you speak more on that? I mean, just yes or no answer isn't always a complete answer.
I'm anxious to get to answer some of these, some of these statements that have been made by certain people. But the, number one, Hyatt Place Hotel franchise requires that certain, so many parking spaces be available in that immediate area. So we'd have a combination of surface park, some surface parking that's privately owned, and, and this particular parking. So if, if we can't supply a certain amount of parking for the hotel, it jeopardizes the whole project and all the impetus that we've, we've achieved at this point. And that I can primarily attribute to the UDAG grant that you awarded. It just added a whole new momentum to the project. If I just may, I may divert one second. Mr. Griffith has a habit of getting up here and making misstatements. "I never said all the financing was in place. Once we got the grant, it was going ahead." Never said, and I wouldn't say it because I know it's wrong. We are currently in the process of negotiating with a bank right now, but I don't have the firm commitment letter. But the $3 million that, that was given to us by Luzerne County has added a lot of strength to the proposal and the project. And I'm very hopeful today, much more than I was months ago.
Mr. Sabatino?
Mr. Baruk, we gave you that money in January. This council voted to give you that money in January. Have you made any progress in getting additional funding at this time?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we're, we just, we just completed, we just completed a, a second marketing study for a particular bank who's looking at lending us $30 million to get this project started.
Okay, so you have no additional funding to announce at this time, though? You've completed a second study?
Right, we, we're, we're in a position, we're in a position to get the project done once we get the word from the bank.
All right. Any other questions from council members? Mr. Lescavage, then Ms. Smith?
I just kind of think we're on a slippery slope because we're targeting one person for an extension of time where we allow so many others the extension. I think it's a bad idea to signal one project out. I just don't think it's prudent.
Ms. Smith, then Mr. Sabatino?
I was not going to, this was not my original comment, but I agree with Kevin. I do feel like this is being singled out particularly. But secondly, my actual comment that I had was that you, what I understood that answer to mean was that you had moved forward with your negotiations with the bank in completing that second study. It's something they required for you to obtain their funds. Am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Sabatino?
We have in the past singled out people. We did it for the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority and shortened their request for extension. So it's not unprecedented at this point to look at certain projects and look at the viability of them, and ask people to take a shorter timeframe.
May I add one thing that you're...
Go ahead, Mr. Baruch.
As, as, as you're singling out a project, you're singling probably out the most impactful project that's going to hit the City of Wokesbury and possibly change a lot of the economics in downtown. So I, you know, I think it's important just to be cautious about the way you're proceeding with the deliberations on this, because comments coming out of this particular council could cause problems for us with our lender. So I just would ask you just to be a little, you know, just give us, let us finish this thing out. You know, it's a complex project, multiple funding sources, you know, we have different components of the project from a public garage to a hotel. The garage just doesn't serve the hotel, by the way, as Larry mentioned. We have all these riverfront activities that are going to be taking place all summer that if we don't do something like this, you're not going to have parking, and they very well may fail. So I think, you know, we have to work together on this thing, and, you know, we, we're willing to do that and do what we have to do to accommodate the best interests of the county. But I can tell you that the county involvement up to this point has been very helpful and very productive, and has really pushed this project to a point where it's more real today than it ever was.
Mr. Thornton?
Thank you. I, I, my, my strong opinion here is if we move this date back four months and we heard that it could seriously jeopardize the entire project going forward, which could have economic devastating impacts for, for decades to come in the City of Wokesbury, I think this four months, we should allow them to continue with their request of March 31st. And if that comes and goes and they, they didn't produce or didn't progress where, then we pull that back then, or take measures of whatever's appropriate then. But sometimes I, I feel like we're finding all the ways we can to stop progress rather than being supportive here and doing everything we can to make sure these things go forward. Thank you.
Mr. Wilovich, then Mr. Sabatino?
Okay, so the eligible activity, that is negative economic impacts, I believe, right? So if this doesn't get finished, we can utilize it for something else that has experienced negative economic impacts afterwards. Okay, I mean, I, we have given everybody else one extension, if this is it, this is it. That's all I'm going to say.
Mr. Sabatino?
He, he asked the question that I was going to ask, what category is it in? And if there's use for it, if we do not grant the extension. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to take back the motion, but...
Okay.
I'll cancel my second.
Okay, motion and a second are removed. All right, any other questions from council before we proceed with the vote? All right, there's a motion and a second to approve, the motion to adopt the resolution approving the modifications to American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded projects. This is the entire list, including the one that we just discussed with the original change of date. Roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number five, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for the Irem Foundation project.
Second.
Motion and a second on the question. Roll call.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number six, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded projects for Keystone Mission and Michaelene's Mission.
Second.
All right, second by Ms. Stevenson. Roll call.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number eight, introduction of the ordinance for budget amendment for EWRAP by the county manager. Manager Krokomo?
We are, I am introducing this... I apologize, I love these microphones and I keep forgetting to turn it on. So I am introducing this ordinance. It comes from the Office of Budget and Finance to open up the 2024 budget to add the additional EWRAP to funding so it can be properly documented in the correct line item. We recently received notice that the emergency rental assistance program, which is the EWRAP two, funding allocation has been increased by $209,351.25.
All right, any questions? All right, moving right into number nine, introduction of the ordinance for the budget amendment for DCED facilities closure grant by the county manager. Manager Krokomo?
Again, I am introducing a budget amendment that's coming from the Office of Budget and Finance to open up the 2024 budget to increase the revenue and expense lines associated with the DCED state facility closure grant in order to expend the remaining funds available.
All right, thank you. If there's nothing further, we'll move on to public comment. So anybody for public comment? We have a couple of slips here. Mr. Pugh?
Thank you. I appreciate your time here. I'm Alan Pugh from Luzern County Fair. I wish we were afforded the option to speak instead of removing our agenda item, but I'm sure that wasn't the intention. As we know, I'm the president of Luzern County Fair and my wife, who recently ran for office as the chairwoman, but she didn't hurt us. None of this delay hurts us. What it does actually is hurts the folks of the Dallas Lions, Harvick's Lions, like Silkworth Lions, Dallas Rotary, Dallas Kiwanis, Back Mountain Youth, Your Dash 365, Penn State Cooperative Extension, 4H, Leak, Leave and Ban, and the Junior Fair sponsors. No, two weeks may not be a big difference. I'm glad to see such a sudden involvement and everything. Wonderful. But what do we do at the fairgrounds? What impact do we have? How many people attend the fair as opposed to the wine fest that was brought up by Councilman McDermott? Quite a difference, I might assure you. Of course, our fair is open to what we can. We still have kids having 4H. We still have the 4H airsoft rifles out there doing their part, because we get about 1,000 people to the wine fest and about 50,000 people to the fair. So we were able to use that part, and of course, we've done the work we could. As I mentioned the last time, I was out here with our people and our volunteers from our different clubs, replacing the water line to get it going. We were out there with our tractors, grading what we could, doing the work we can do. Unfortunately, that succeeds us. Yes, you did, once in our 62-year history, donated us $100,000, and we greatly appreciate it for the ARPA funds towards the sewer project. That was very helpful and we appreciate it. We couldn't have done it without yous. But then a natural disaster hit. Up until then, our service clubs have been very good about raising our funds and taking care of our own needs. We're not here to be a burden to anybody, we're not a taxing authority, I can't raise a tax to buy a fire truck, I can't get an LSA grant, we are not a municipal authority, we're a nonprofit out there for the enjoyment of the public. We run the veterans events, the Halloween for the public, we did the license plate swap outs that you guys have done with your various legislatives, we did your COVID testing, all the, for the Department of Health, Luzern County has set up one in this end, one at the other end, we're the EVAC zone for schools and universities, we donate to the fire and EMS when they help participate at the fair. We have the Rotary Wine Fest, as just noted, yeah, that's how they raise the funds to give back to their community, just like all these folks here. We teach your future leaders, there's over 1,500 members in the various clubs out there, plenty who dug into their own pockets to do this. We did turn this request in months ago, when we knew, and I worked hard as an EMA coordinator volunteer, to challenge what was submitted on behalf of Luzern County, along with Wyoming and Lackawanna, to get the totals up to meet our flood decorations. And we made, and requested and had FEMA come back and retort the facility, well documented. However, ultimately turned down. So I hope you consider it in the future, I just want to say that the fairs in the 2011 study do $126 million a year in economic out, out for Luzern or for the state, and I really appreciate if you'll consider that going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Mangan?
Yes, sir. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here off topic. Again, my name's Joe Mangan from Hanover Township, and most of you may know why I'm here. More than a year ago, I notified most of you, along with some other county officials, firstly, or in writing, about my allegation of child abuse in investigation code. My daughter was the victim in that investigation, and unfortunately, I received four different decisions in this case. Child abuse, unfounded, child abuse, unfounded. What happened? The workers signed on the child abuse case, they said it was child abuse, what happened to my daughter. An attorney from the county decides to get involved, intercepts the case, and changes it to unfounded. Gets caught. Child line kicks it back, it goes back to child abuse. He doesn't get. And I know most of you have the information that I'm talking about. He changes it to unfounded. Again, the final decision goes in as unfounded with the same four signatures on it that always intended to sign the child abuse claim. So we have four different decisions with the same signature on it over that period of time. Each of those people who signed that report said they never intended it towards being an unfounded decision. I have confirmation, written confirmation from here, that said those individuals had nothing to do with an unfounded decision, this should have always been indicated. I also have an email from the Northeast Regional Office advising me, I brought the email today, that they wanted to start an investig, criminal investigation, not because of the workers, the children, it was, they did their job, but because of what this attorney did, changing the decision to unfounded. What does that do? Well, that put this person back in school with my daughter. You haven't responded to my emails, so I have to go public. It's kind of embarrassing for me and my daughter to go public, but this is the only way I'm going to get answers. For some reason, no one wants to put it in writing for me that this is a legitimate decision. If it is, put it in writing for me, tell me that this is legitimate. You can't put it in writing for me because we all know what this person did was wrong, and it's a cover-up. I'm asking you today, I've asked it 100 times in emails, can an attorney make a decision for any children and youth case? Yes or no?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mangan. Just so you're aware, we are the legislative body of the county, so we can't make any decisions on, on items like that. I mean, you're going to have to take that up with the administrative personnel.
They don't answer it.
We certainly hear your concerns today, but we, there's nothing that we as council can do to order them to do anything as, as the administrative function. That's against the charter.
But does council know? I mean, Mr. Skeen's right here. Does an attorney for children and youth have the authority to make a decision in the case? Yes or no?
I would encourage council not to opine on that.
See you in a couple of weeks, I'll be back.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Griffith?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, anybody else for public comment? Go ahead, sir. State your name and municipality.
My name is Kelvin Swanger. I live in Sweet Valley. I am the Secretary of the Dallas Area Fall Fair Incorporated, and a 30-year volunteer at the fairgrounds. And I just want to say that, number one, we appreciate the $100,000 that helped us with our sewer project. That is a tremendous leap forward from renting a lot of job johnnies for all of our events that we have at the fairgrounds. Second of all, the opportunity to submit for the, the catastrophic act of God that, that went through this past fall. I just want you folks to know that the fairgrounds are not closed. We are not closed. We are persevering, we are moving forward. That's why we have a Wine and Brew Fest fundraiser. Half goes to the Rotary, the other half to the Dallas Area Fall Fair. That money goes towards, back to the buildings and grounds. So we just ask that in two weeks that hopefully the reconsideration will lend to, to our favor. And we really appreciate those who have vocally supported the fair here on council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? Anybody on the Zoom? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned, we'll start back up at 10 after 7.
Recording stopped.
Take a ruler for that.
What's up? How are you tonight?
I owe you a little.
I just wanted to let you know.
Hey, Jim.
Hey, how you doing?
How are you?
I'm just trying to listen.
Thanks, here.
You're good, okay.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming here.
We could have finished.
You should make some.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Walter.
You're welcome.
Don't want any, don't want any kite pop light moments again, one on here.
At the...
He's already got some on there.
Thank you, Walter.
You're welcome.
I was just going to ask, like, it's all, don't want any, don't want any kite pop light moments again, one on here. At the...
Thank you.
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 I don't know.
I just wanted to ask if that mic is off. Don't want any kite pop light moments again. What went on here?
No, there's probably nothing we could do about this, but I know that property's appraised at roughly $10,000. And we're giving it away for $550. I just think it's a shame because I know they go through the bidding process and whatnot, and everything's legal. But the next item, I'm not going to bring up on the next item, same story. The individual's offering $1,000 on a $21,000 property. And I just want to remind everybody here in the room that this council, we don't own the properties. Loser County owns it, but actually, the people own the property. They are Loser County. So, you know, we're giving away properties that are appraised at $31,000, and we're giving it away for $1,550. I just wish in the future, we could do something differently, or have some kind of measure in place where we're not giving our properties away for pennies on the dollar. That's all.
Mr. Loscavage, then Mr. Sabatino.
So, this program has been a pet peeve of mine since it started. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't Randy Robertson come up with this grand scheme idea?
No, there were letters sent out to some of the adjacent property owners, but we did also have them listed on the county. There were a bunch of parcels that were on there. We have since taken that down. But all the county-owned properties were listed out there for people to, you know, purchase. So not only was it letters from Randy Robertson.
So, most people that are going to know about these properties, not everybody's going to read a little reader ad in the paper, let's face it. So I think going forward, we should discontinue this process. I think what has to happen is these properties need to hit the MLS, let all bidders have a fair shot at these properties. That's the way this should work. I can't imagine that it's legal for county-owned property to be sold without giving everybody a fair shot. And I don't think putting a little reader ad, but yet telling the neighbor, hey, this property's for sale, is really the right way to go about it.
Mr. Sabatino?
It's my understanding that these properties have to be done through a quick deed process because some of the, we're not sure if we own it. So these people are taking on the burden of going through the legal process of getting a real deed for this property. Title. They have to do the title search and everything. So getting it at a discount from us also saves us money because we're not doing, we're not spending the money to do that research. So that was one of the reasons why I felt we should pass this along. Because we don't have to spend the money and legal processes to find out or to get an actual deed. We're passing that burden on to the person who wants to purchase it. And that's why they're getting a discount. I thought that was a reasonable, you know, savings there.
Just so you know what my thoughts are, there's been previous lots and properties that were sold within a city or a borough, and that wasn't the case. They had titles or deeds, and they were offered to the neighbor. Now, I know, living in town, if you give the opportunity to somebody to put a garage up, somebody's going to be willing to walk down three houses to have off-street parking and park their car in a garage. So what I'm saying is I think it should be fair and equal through the whole process. That's all.
I agree with you. And if you, I mean, in that committee meeting, there is a parcel that was valued at almost $40,000, and the gentleman offered us $1,000, and we didn't vote to pass that through. So we are, we agree with you, but these specific properties were easier to get rid of than to pay legal research and fees to get them off of our books.
Ms. McDermott, you have something to respond before I go to the other council members?
We have talked about this in the Real Estate Committee, and Mr. Griffith, I'm sure you remember, we've gone through this over the last four years. It's kind of like, we talk about it over and over. But the assessed value doesn't mean it's really worth that much, and you know that as well as we do, that you could always go and have your property lowered, your assessment lowered. These properties have been sitting there doing nothing. And granted, you might think that they're valuable, but they're really only valuable to the next-door neighbor, if it's this small of a lot, because it's only .11 acres. And again, you need an acre to build on in Dallas Township. So if there's someone that's living next door to it and that wants to buy it and pay a little bit of tax on it, that's very beneficial for us. There are some lots that we did find that we thought were valuable. Then you have to get an appraisal, and that was a process that we were trying with Mr. DeAndrea's property down in Hall and Back Township. Lot of land, we couldn't get anybody to appraise it, so we finally just decided to sell it. It was like $20,000, so that was wonderful. However, it's a lot of these little parcels that just aren't really worth anything. And I invite anyone to go drive by, and I could give you the best directions that we have. And the one that we did wait to talk about, I'm doing more research on that one because I think there's an easement through there that doesn't make it worth anything. But, you know, take a drive-by and just see what it looks like. And I know you have done that, Mr. Loscavage. the Judicial Protection Unit of the Superior Court, and Brian Leventhal from the Judicial Protection Unit. Dear Sheriff Shumsky, The Superior Court of Pennsylvania Judicial Protection Unit would like to acknowledge and thank you and the following dedicated Luzerne County Sheriff deputies for your invaluable assistance in ensuring the safety of our Superior Court judges and enhancing the memorable experience of their visit to Luzerne County on May 21st and 22nd, 2024. Chief Deputy Eugene A. Guineri, Lieutenant Genesis Arias, Sergeant James Joyce. Special thanks to Sergeant Jason Volchak for overseeing our daily security concerns in the courtroom and Deputy Sheriff Dalton Hastings, who was assigned directly to the Superior Court session. The collaborative efforts from our local law enforcement partners play a pivotal role in the success of our sessions. Thank you for your commitment to the well-being of our judges. That's our Sheriff's Department.
Very good. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Great job, as always. Anything else for the division reports? Manager Crocomo?
Only if there are questions.
Okay. Any questions? All right, moving on. Number two, discussion regarding the resolution requesting a local match from Luzerne County Council for the Hazleton Public Transit State Section 1513 operating allocation.
We have Ralph Sharp here to do his presentation.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Sharp.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Sharp.
Thank you. My name is Ralph Sharp. I'm the Director of Hazleton Public Transit. I'm here on behalf of the City of Hazleton and Hazleton Public Transit. Every year I come before council requesting our local match funds in order to obtain operating assistance to provide transportation for our residents of Lower Luzerne County and Luzerne County. We provide fixed route service and paratransit service to the county. Without this local match funding, we can't get this assistance to provide this service. So every year I come before you respectfully asking for our local match funds.
Mr. Sabatino?
Mr. Sharp, you're asking us for $218,000, but that is a match. How much is the state going to chip in if we give you that?
If I can obtain the 218, the state will give us $2,671,653.
Thank you.
Mr. Lovovich?
I know I probably don't know the answer to this question, but did the other counties contribute anything?
Currently, they are not, but I am always working on it to try to obtain funding, as well as everybody knows. Every year I make calls and I do what I can to possibly do something, you know, with the other counties. I, yeah, I do. Believe me, I do.
Thanks, Ralph. I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Mr. Thornton?
Mr. Sharp, good evening.
Good evening.
I know every year I kind of give you a hard time over this funding, but I'm not going to do so tonight. I will support it. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Any other council members? Any comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you very much.
All right. Number three, discussion regarding proposals for county-owned property. And if, Councilwoman McDermott, if you just want to go through all of them individually, that's fine.
I know. I almost remembered. On two parcels, and they actually run through their parking lot. So I think it's very wise of them to want to purchase them. And they are offering on the one parcel $14,000, on the other one $8,500, for a grand total of $22,500. So I think this one's a no-brainer. Any questions on that one? The next one is Martin Carr. And actually, the next two are in Dallas Township. And just to let you know, they're both very small lots. Dallas Township requires one acre to build on. The first one with Martin Carr, he's offering $550 for a .11 acre lot. Again, it's too small to build on. He just wants to be able to put a shed on there if he can. It's a paper road to it. It's just part of, you know, right by his property. Any questions on that one?
I have a question.
Oh, Mr. Thornton, and then Mr. Lescavage.
Yeah, I know there's probably nothing we could do about this, but I notice that property is appraised at roughly $10,000, and we're giving it away for $550. I just think it's a shame because I know they go through the bidding process and whatnot, and everything's legal, but my, the next item, I'm not going to bring up on the next item. Same story. The individual's offering $1,000 on a $21,000 property. And I just want to remind everybody here in the room that this council, we don't own the properties. Luzerne County owns it, but actually the people own the property. They are Luzerne County. So, you know, we're giving away 31, properties that are appraised at $31,000, and we're giving it away for $1,550. I just wish in the future, we could do something differently or have some kind of measure in place where we're not giving our properties away for pennies on the dollar. That's all.
Mr. Lescavage, then Mr. Sabatino.
So this program has been a pet peeve of mine since it started. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't Randy Robertson come up with this grand scheme idea?
No, there was, there were letters sent out to some of the adjacent property owners, but we did also have them listed on the county. There were a bunch of parcels that were on there. We have since taken that down. But all the county-owned properties were listed out there for people to, you know, purchase. So not only was it letters from Randy Robertson.
So most people that are going to know about these properties, not everybody's going to read a little reader ad in the paper, let's face it. So I think going forward, we should discontinue this process. I think what has to happen is these properties need to hit the MLS, let all bidders have a fair shot at these properties. That's the way this should work. I can't imagine that it's legal for county-owned property to be sold without giving everybody a fair shot. And I don't think putting a little reader ad, but yet telling the neighbor, hey, this property's for sale, is really the right way to go about it.
Mr. Sabatino?
It's my understanding that these properties have to be done through a quick deed process because some of the, we're not sure if we own it. So these people are taking on the burden of going through the legal process of getting a real deed for this property. Title. They have to do the title search and everything. So getting it at a discount from us also saves us money because we're not doing, we're not spending the money to do that research. So that was one of the reasons why I felt we should pass this along. Because we don't have to spend the money and legal processes to find out or to get an actual deed. We're passing that burden on to the person who wants to purchase it. And that's why they're getting a discount. I thought that was a reasonable, you know, savings there.
Just so you know what my thoughts are, there's been previous lots and properties that were sold within a city or a borough, and that wasn't the case. They had titles or deeds, and they were offered to the neighbor. Now, I know, living in town, if you give the opportunity to somebody to put a garage up, somebody's going to be willing to walk down three houses to have off-street parking and park their car in a garage. So what I'm saying is I think it should be fair and equal through the whole process. That's all.
I agree with you. And if you, I mean, in that committee meeting, there is a parcel that was valued at almost $40,000, and the gentleman offered us $1,000, and we didn't vote to pass that through. So we are, we agree with you, but these specific properties were easier to get rid of than to pay legal research and fees to get them off of our books.
Ms. McDermott, you have something to respond before I go to the other council members?
We have talked about this in the Real Estate Committee, and Mr. Griffiths, I'm sure you remember, we've gone through this over the last four years. It's kind of like, we talk about it over and over. But the assessed value doesn't mean it's really worth that much, and you know that as well as we do. That you could always go and have your property lowered, your assessment lowered. These properties have been sitting there doing nothing. And granted, you might think that they're valuable, but they're really only valuable to the next-door neighbor, if it's this small of a lot, because it's only .11 acres. And again, you need an acre to build on in Dallas Township. So if there's someone that's living next door to it and that wants to buy it and pay a little bit of tax on it, that's very beneficial for us. There are some lots that we did find that we thought were valuable. Then you have to get an appraisal, and that was a process that we were trying with Mr. DeAndrea's property down in Hollenbach Township. Lot of land. We couldn't get anybody to appraise it, so we finally just decided to sell it. It was like $20,000, so that was wonderful. However, it's a lot of these little parcels that just aren't really worth anything. And I invite anyone to go drive by, and I could give you the best directions that we have. And the one that we did wait to talk about, I'm doing more research on that one because I think there's an easement through there that doesn't make it worth anything. But, you know, take a drive-by and just see what it looks like. And I know you have done that, Mr. Lescavage, yeah.
Except for these three, I always drive by. Unfortunately, and I did send email.
I know you were working.
I can never make a 12 o'clock meeting during the week. Matter of fact, strategic initiatives sometimes come up 81 with this road construction. I have a hard time making five o'clock executive session.
I get it. And we don't, you know, we don't always do an afternoon one, but it just, the schedules fill up fast.
Ms. Smith, you got a question?
I just wanted to reiterate and comment on what Councilman Sabatino said. They are quit deeds?
To clear the title. Like, that's right, that's right in the procedure. Yeah, the buyer has to clear the title.
Councilman Lescavage, if they find that the title isn't clear, it's a whole other legal mess that would cost, would potentially cost us an enormous amount of money. And so giving them out at a lower price and then benefiting from the taxes and finally getting them back on the tax rolls, I do find to be a benefit. Because it is possible, if we're just giving out quit-deeds, that there's a problem with the property. And if we find, and it's our responsibility, that's a huge mess and a lot of costs.
Ms. Stevenson? You're good. Okay. Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually agree with Mr. Sabatino. You're right. There's a lot of process there, relieving us of our burden and all the other mess that we'd have to go through. I agree with Mr. Lescavage in that we could have both worlds. We could have what you're saying, and we could have what you're saying. So you're right, and I agree with Ms. Smith over there, that it makes sense to get this big monkey off our back and put it on someone else in the public. All Mr. Lescavage is saying is that, and maybe I should have rephrased that, but what he's saying is,
We understood your point.
Instead of just letting a few people in society know about it, you know, maybe advertising a bigger scope, and maybe 20, 30 people go look at it. Who knows? That's all.
Yeah, on that note, that portion, I absolutely agree with Kevin. How do we make that, these properties more accessible to the public?
I guess you'd go with what he said and list them on the MLS. But to do that, we would have to take the legal burden of clearing the titles. No? No?
No, why would we? We're just listing them.
I would just, I would think.
If we're not, if we're selling them without a quitclaim deed, we would. But because we're selling them with a quitclaim deed, we don't have to.
And if it's a tiny parcel, you could give it a value of $20,000, $10,000, but, you know,
In reality.
Well, Realtor's not going to want to work for $1,000, you know, if that's what the offer's going to come down to. That's kind of like a waste of time.
This was only my other thought, too. Let's say there was a lot, and it's 50 by 50 next to the house. You got to look at the factor that when that person buys that, you know, lot, and then they go to move to sell that house, that makes that value of that house so much greater in value, having that lot adjacent to the current property. So it increases, I'll bet you, their property by 30, 40 grand to have that much more space or room.
And I know we talked about this before, but you'd have to, if someone was willing to sit down and look through all the properties and drive by them and see if there's anything really worthwhile. I haven't done that, and I don't know if anybody is interested in doing that, but you can certainly do that. And then what we have a lot of problems with, because we did have some on the Real Estate past meetings, that they didn't have deeds. So now we have to petition the court to get the deeds, and it's just, there's a lot of problems with these parcels, and that's why they're sitting where they are. However, we shouldn't, you know, we should still try to get rid of them. But if there's ever one that you drive by that you think is worth something, then we have to figure out, what do we want to do? Do we want to have an appraisal? It was tough trying to get an appraisal for that other property, and it never happened. But regardless, we made a good amount of money on it.
Mr. Sabatino?
I mean, if, when you're doing your drive-bys, as, you know, the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, let me know if there's a nice, like, piece of land in between some homes. We could use Act 13 money to possibly turn it into a little park, a little green space. You know, we could use some of these properties for ourselves to better people's lives around that piece of land. So we should, we should be taking a drive-by, all of us. Well, those of us on the Real Estate Committee should be taking a drive-by and looking at these properties like you do. So I applaud you for that.
Just as a note, you can also pull up all these properties on the GIS map if you have the number. And you could, if you find them on GIS, you can look them up on Google Earth and then do the street view thing. So I do that quite a bit when I look at these properties. So it's just a little bit easier for me than just driving, driving around, but.
Price of gas and whatnot.
Exactly. Be an environmentally conscious. Go ahead.
And environmentally conscious, it's very important. Thank you, Chair. To sort of make a comment about what Brian said about, he sort of said it cavalierly about getting this monkey off our backs and letting someone else take it. I just want to say that when someone takes a quitclaim deed, they know that there's problems that they could be facing. It's not like we're fooling anyone in the public or we're not being upfront and truthful with quitclaim deeds. When someone purchases them, they're well aware that there are potential problems.
It says right in the procedure that they fill out, that they have to, they have to do that. They have to clear the title.
I just don't want anyone to think that we're fooling the rule over anyone's eyes or being non-transparent.
We do it full disclosure.
It says everything in there, all the steps that they have to take. It's all in that procedure.
Any other questions or comments by council members?
And then the, just the last one is Mr. Schweitzer. And again, it's Dallas Township. It is only .14 acres. Again, it's too small to build on, but it's near his property, and he wanted to be able to maybe put like a storage shed on there, too. But it's, you know, the first stage of trying to purchase it.
All right. Any other questions? Moving on, number four, discussion regarding the resolution declaring the goals for Luzerne County for the long-range goals, mission statement, vision statement. Mr. Haas is not here.
Not here.
I know. Is there any?
Can I move to table it till next work session?
I'm the, I'm the vice chair if we want to go forward.
Ms. Smith, you're free to do so. That's fine.
Councilwoman Stevenson, would you like to table it until we have Mr. Haas? No, I think let's do this. Let's be amazing. Okay. Let's be amazing.
If, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I just want to add, as I suggested, I sent an email out two weeks ago to Mr. Haas. I think as a long-range goal, we should definitely have a prison on that list, a new prison. We all know that we're living with a very questionable prison infrastructure over there. And there's been many safety concerns cited by the state, state auditors when they come in. And I think we should, you know, table it, like you said. But when we bring it up again, maybe someone could add the vision of someday having a new prison. Thank you.
Well, I mean, we're not voting on it. That's exactly why. Yeah. Brian, did you see it?
Go ahead. What was the number?
Yeah. Improved correctional facilities.
Terrific. Thank you.
Right.
Mr. Lescavage?
So one of the things I've been talking about, and I would love to see happen, I don't think any one county at this point can afford to take on a prison. While it's a great idea, I would love to see us go in conjunction with a neighboring county to build a new facility on the border that would accommodate state-of-the-art for both counties. That's something I would love to see done. I think it can happen, and I think the dollar amount for each county.
Start looking for land. That's the problem, like finding the land. But seriously.
I think if we look hard enough, we'll find it.
Having been involved in the system with the prison and having been a criminal defense attorney for the county, I can tell you that one of the largest problems with that is the transportation from the jail to the courthouse. There's a lot of transportation that happens, it takes a lot of sheriffs. There's a lot of logistics that have to be fulfilled, and having a jail so far away, this was the problem with SCI. I mean, we already have a prison that needs billions of dollars of work, and then we're thinking about building another, buying another prison farther away? That needs billions of dollars of work? We can't do that. We can't. But one of the biggest logistics in moving a prison that far away from the courthouse on either side of the border, I mean, we border numerous counties, it's just, it's just so far. I think that that's, hey, I'm only one person, but I've lived the system. I've experienced the system. I know the logistics that the sheriffs have to jump through to make all of those transportations happen in a timely fashion, in a safe fashion, in a safe fashion for the public, in a safe fashion for the inmates. I'm not sure that a prison not this close to the courthouse is something that's actually feasible, given all of the things that have to happen. Harry, do you have any thoughts on that?
I don't get a vote.
I'm not asking you to vote. We are in a work session, my friend.
Well, I think we should get on with the document as a whole. We could debate the prison.
We can.
Maybe an Infrastructure Committee meeting? That's next Thursday or next Tuesday.
Don't threaten me with a good time, Jimmy.
Tuesday, next Tuesday. I'm sorry, Tuesday.
Go ahead. Mr. Thornton?
And I agree, the logistics are very difficult, Ms. Smith. However, many, many counties across the Commonwealth do it now. What they do in many counties across the country, actually. And for example, I'm just thinking, and Kevin and I spoke about this recently. If Lackawanna, I'm just using it, it could be any county, Lackawanna and Luzerne County combined to make one brand-new prison anywhere up there near the airport, Montage, there's a lot of land up there. It's not that. It's all developed up there. But logistically, many, many counties across the Commonwealth and the country.
Can you name some? Because I've practiced in Wayne County. I've practiced in Pike County, Susquehanna County, Wyoming County,
There's many.
Columbia County. I've practiced.
Could I just finish my point?
But can you name some?
So what they, not right now, I just want to throw my comment out. I have the floor. I just want to finish this statement, okay? And I will research that and get back to you on those counties.
I wasn't meaning to be rude. I apologize.
No, but that's all right.
I truly am interested.
So what they do in other locations is they assign a judge to be located in the judge's chambers at the prison itself. And every week, a judge will rotate, so that that judge is only there for those five days. Next week, there's a different judge for five days. Third week, a different judge. And then with Lackawanna County Judges, I don't know, we might have 10 judges, 12, 13. They would have one week every 13 weeks that a judge would be located at the prison itself. Also, what a lot of prisons do is they do a lot of these meetings on Zoom. You've seen it. Everybody's seen it. I mean, everybody watches Court Cam, like I do during the day. And, and a lot of these judges hold Zoom.
Not all of us are retired.
They hold Zoom meetings with the perpetrators, and these are serious offenders. There are minor offenders, and the lawyers are there, the attorneys for both sides. And they do it via Zoom. So it is being done a lot of places, but if you need a list, I'll get a list for you.
Just, just a couple. I'm just curious. Because truly, I'm seeing that.
Can I motion the table this until the next meeting?
But can we?
All right, there's a motion to second to table.
Can I discuss the question? Can we at least look at the document as a whole before we table it? Because we've worked on it.
There's a motion to the second to table. I guess, I guess roll call? Are all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
All right, document's tabled until the next, will it be the next work session, I suppose? Okay. All right, sounds good. Okay.
Can I just go back to, Kevin, I wish you were here back in September of 2021 because we sold off 21 parcels in Dallas for $500 each. I think you would have really enjoyed to argue that one. And coincidentally, the person was just in the room. He left, though, didn't he?
Okay. All right, is there any public comment? Go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
Jamie Walsh from Ross Township. About a year and a half ago, I had asked, there was $1.3 million allocated for Sweet Valley Road to be repaired. Does anybody know where that stands right now?
Manager Crocomo?
That was with the ARPA funds, I believe, the 1.3?
No, I think it was approved prior to the ARPA funds.
We'll get the list, and we'll send it to you. I have, I believe I have your email.
Okay.
We'll do that with council. I'll send it with council.
And then one other thing, they're looking at doing, I think there was a grant. I literally heard about it this week, so I'm throwing it out there because there's some concerns in Ross Township about it. There was a grant that was given for a road in Ross Township, Broadway Road, that they're looking, the only way that the county could get the grant is if they put a bike trail with it. Is this true?
A lot of the grants have that as a requirement. That's not something that we do unilaterally, but to get the money to rebuild the road, we have to put bike lanes in. And trust me, I have said to PennDOT that if you want to put bike lanes in, you should have a very exhaustive plan. I take 309 home because 81's a mess, and there's a bike lane on 309 that just ends. And it's not safe. So, but if we, if we apply for the grant, one of the requirements is to put a bike lane in.
Okay, so would, and I don't know if any council member would be willing to come out for a ride where this is supposed to go. It's not, it's literally not feasible to put a bike.
I will come out, and I will now bring our road and bridge people out to look at it. I don't think that there's a way that we can get a waiver, but I certainly will advocate that, you know, we want to do this road, but putting a bike lane in isn't safe. I, I, believe me, PennDOT does not like hearing from me when I keep on bringing up 309. Because it just ends. It just ends.
Do you know the road?
Yes, I know what you're talking about.
Are you familiar with the road?
I did do a tour, and I, and I did go on that road, but I don't have an independent recollection.
Okay. Well, just.
I've definitely been on that road before. Yeah, because we had a conversation about this another time. This specific road. I remember the conversation with the bike lanes and the grant.
So, and I don't want to keep anybody here later, but in, over the next week or two, like, I don't even know how fast this is going to happen, so.
It's not going to happen fast. If we can get grants in two weeks, that would be a beautiful thing.
Yeah, in the next two to three weeks, or next month or two, whatever. I would just like you guys to, because honestly, if, there may be a chance that the bike lane could go on the other road that's already allocated. It's safer. It's more feasible. But these are just some things that we can, we can discuss when you come out.
Discuss it. I'm not necessarily opposed to bike lanes. I just think they should be safe. That's all.
And there's nowhere to, there's no way to get on or off them, nowhere to park, unless you park in a farmer's field, and they probably will pull you out with a tractor.
There's a bike lane, when you go to C cap, there's a bike lane at the right-hand turn. It goes right into the bike lane. I, I don't know who approved that design.
Okay. Well, we got time, so that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Griffith, you had a check for, you're good. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody on the Zoom? Motion?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.